We'll begin our meeting again on the agenda with the public hearings. And we will open up the floor for a public hearing on the possible adoption of an ordinance to amend and reenact in its entirety the Scott County Public Procurement Ordinance.
Listen, Steph. Steph, we was about to start without you.
We started without you.
Come on up. There was one.
We'll begin public hearings with the possible adoption of an ordinance to amend and reenact in its entirety the Scott County Public Procurement Ordinance to reflect the law as it now reads entitled 2.2, Chapter 43 of the Code of Virginia. Is there any discussion or any public comments? If not, do we have a motion for the adoption of this ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Manus made the ordinance.
I'll second it.
Motion.
I'll second it.
And Miss Addington, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under public hearings. 7B, possible adoption of an ordinance to amend the personal property tax exemption for disabled veterans pursuant to both subdivision A, 8 of Article X, and Section 6, Article 10, Section 6 of the Constitution of Virginia, and 58.1-3668 of the Code of Virginia, 1950. Any discussion?
Could we just have a brief description of that, just so we have it on the record for people that watch this, since we've had a lot of tax questions today?
Do you have had this ordinance in the past for a total exemption for disabled veterans that meet the criteria and submit things to the Commissioner of Revenue's office? This ordinance amends to add wording that that exemption doesn't, it expires upon the death of the veteran and doesn't go to their surviving spouse. So that just clarifies that, and it's based on the code section in the Constitution of Virginia, tracks that language.
We have a motion for the adoption of this ordinance?
So moved.
Mr. Jeter made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
I think Mr. Skeen got it out.
Mr. Skeen, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Close that public hearing and open up 7B public hearing. I'm sorry, 7C public hearing pursuant to the requirements of Section 15.2-1800 of the Code of Virginia to consider the disposition of real property owned by Scott County being the former law office of Dazien Compton located in the town of Gate City, tax map number 14687A194 at 179 West Jackson Street, Gate City, Virginia. The proposed transfer of the property is to Diana Holler. Any discussion? Any discussion by the board? Do we have a motion to accept this proposal?
Do you need anything else in that sound, Deacon?
You would approve the disposition of this property to her for $100,000 and authorize the chairman and the county administrator to sign and take any actions necessary to complete the sale.
Okay, we need a motion to that, babe.
So moved.
Mr. Jeter made the motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Castile, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On the agenda, under number 8, unfinished business, update on emergency declaration.
We've got Mr. Gerald here that will give an update on agriculture, and Bill, if you would care to get the PowerPoint ready while Mr. Gerald's speaking.
I'm Scott Gerald. I'm an agricultural extension agent for Scott County. As I had stated previously, as I've been before the board, our declaration through the state emergency support function is to do agricultural damage assessments in each county. And that can cause some confusion because some folks think that we're involved with the remediation or the cost share part of it, but we just do the agricultural damage assessment that gets turned into the emergency services. And it's important to assess what damage is done because that then either triggers or determines what potential assistance could be available in the future for farmers and landowners. To date, we have assessed $2.669 million worth of agricultural damages, and that includes things such as losses in hay, barns. The trees that are down in timber is an additional $2.079 million. So we are looking right now at $4.75 million worth of agricultural damages in the county, but that is real damage. What that does not include is potential lost income from the future for animals that were lost, for sell-off of animals that will have to be replaced, the lost income on the timber, the value that it had standing versus the value now that it's on the ground. So that number, if we put realistic values to it, could be between the $6 and $7 million range for Scott County. And, you know, one of those things that we need to keep in mind is this, a lot of our farmers view their timberland as being part of their retirement package. And that retirement package would be when it matured and they wanted to cut it, that would be an income source for those trees that are on the ground that is no longer an option for them. So as we look at the damage around, somebody's made the comment, said, "Well, it's devastating, but at least it was just the timber." That's an actual loss for our farmers, tremendous loss. Two other things before I close for questions is we do have a household water testing program that will be coming up next week for anybody who may have had damages to wells, cisterns, springs, and may be concerned about the water quality. This is a reduced cost, it is $70 for the water testing that will be done at Virginia Tech. There are scholarships available that would reduce that cost for eligible individuals, but I do have some flyers that I would like to hand out to the board for that. And then I think Mr. Skeen is going to mention later on that our 20th premium insured heifer sale will be coming up November of the 30th, and I do have some flyers for that if you all have questions with it, too. Are there any questions? All right, if not, I would encourage folks to look at the disaster recovery site that FEMA has set up at the Pioneer Center, even for things that you may not consider, lost items in the freezers, lost time at work, issues like that. They are beginning to open up and accept people in and just seek what they have. I had the question that was posed to me, well, we didn't have that much damage, why are they here? They are here on the invitation of the governor on our behalf. So use that as an opportunity to go see what potential funding there could be to help. There is also talk from FEMA about doing an agricultural disaster recovery site, and that is a resource fair that will be put together in the Lee, Scott, and Wise County areas. That is still in the incipient phases. We do don't have the date or the location yet, but once that is put together, I'll send that information to you all also. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a short update that I wanted to provide as well. If Bill wants to click, we'll get started on that. As you know, Scott County was approved for FEMA public assistance. So far, some damages that we have had and have cleaned up in the county as far as public. We had a lot of trees down at Scott County Park and Golf Course and at Keith Memorial Park. We had those trees removed, and our walking trails were both completely closed, and those have been opened back up now after the tree removal. We had damage to the roof at E-911, and a new roof has been installed there. And we've also had a lot of tree damage and debris down at the landfill and transfer station property, and our staff there have been using the equipment that we have on hand to get those items cleaned up. We are continuing to compile a list of expenses for the county when we do our public assistance requests. I have a spreadsheet that we're plugging everything into so that we can get that request done. As far as individual assistance, Scott County was approved by FEMA for individual assistance on October 13th. Just a very important note, the deadline for citizens to apply for that individual assistance is December the 2nd. That'll be here before you know it. As of 11/4, which was Monday, there have been 262 applications from Scott County citizens. FEMA went door-to-door in areas with the most damage, and they visited or left information on 2090 homes. They've also placed flyers at businesses, they've been set up at the flea market, and they've visited the food pantries to help spread the word to those affected where they can get the needed assistance. Scott County Virginia Star and the Kingsport Times News have both published the information on how to apply for needed assistance. And we also have all that information on the county website, social media, and then we have monitors out in the foyer here outside this room that have that information on them as well. Like I said, for FEMA individual assistance, that deadline is December 2nd. There's four ways that you can apply for assistance. You can apply at www.disasterassistance.gov, by phone, 1-800-621-3362, by using the FEMA app on your smartphone, or by visiting a disaster recovery center. The closest disaster recovery center to us is now at the Pioneer Center in Dudley. That opened yesterday, and they are open Monday through Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. They are closed on Sunday. So if you've got any questions at all, that's your best resource is to go there and meet with someone one-on-one, face-to-face, and get the information that you need and your questions answered. So when you apply, there's some questions they're going to ask and things you need to provide, a description of your damage, your contact information, including your phone number and address where you can be reached, your address at the time of disaster, your social security number, your contact information. If you have insurance, they'll need your policy number, agent, or company, your annual household income, your bank account information if you would like to receive benefits by direct deposit, and that checklist is also available at the website disasterassistance.gov. FEMA also has a program called Individual and Households Program, IHP. That is for people who are eligible individuals or households affected that do not have insurance or are underinsured. It is not a substitute for insurance, and they cannot compensate for all losses. Some of the IHP assistance may include funds for temporary housing, funds to support the repair or replacement of owner occupied homes, temporary housing, funds for hazard mitigation, funds for other uninsured or underinsured needs, and there are 52 eligible IHP residents, and the amount is $68,635.55 so far on IHP program funds.
Is that total or per person?
That's total. So far, yeah. So Agriculture Recovery Resource Days, as Mr. Gerald mentioned, we have one tomorrow at Highlands Fellowship Church in Abington. If you are out there and you have ag damages, tomorrow from 9:00 to 6:00, Highlands Fellowship Church on Letaga Road in Abington. There's also one on Saturday from 9:00 to 5:00 at the Whitfield Meeting Center in Whitfield, and they are looking at a central location for Lee, Scott, and Wise Counties to have one closer for us. So be on the lookout for that, and I will share that information once I have a date and time confirmed. And Small Business Administration, this is my last slide. He was here earlier and spoke during Citizen Expression. The Small Business Administration works closely with FEMA to assist businesses and homeowners in the form of low-interest disaster loans. The loans are for homeowners, renters, businesses, and nonprofit organizations to cover loss that's not fully compensated by insurance or other resources. Homeowners may be eligible for a disaster loan for structural repairs and rebuilding. Homeowners and renters may be eligible for a loan to replace personal property, including damaged or destroyed vehicles. The deadline for physical property damage is also December the 2nd, and the deadline for economic injury applications is July 1st, 2025. So as I've mentioned before, December 2nd is a very important date. You don't want to miss that deadline for FEMA assistance if you do need it, if you're out there, need some help. Once the emergency is passed and we end the declaration, we will have a debriefing on items that we're going to work to improve on, and what worked well and what didn't work well during this process. So that'll be upcoming at a later date.
Okay, we'll move on to under item number 9, Part B, Animal Friendly License Plate Funds. Fred, do you want to explain that?
Sure. I believe it's on your tablet, the form that we usually get. May not be. We get funds back for each animal friendly license plate that is sold in the state. This year, it's $195. That's a little bit more than we've got in the past years. So what we've done in the past is give that money to the Humane Society. It's not something that we can keep for ourselves. So I just need authorization if you so desire to give that to the Humane Society again this year, that we authorize that where we can get our forms sent back to the state.
I will make the motion that we give that money to the Humane Society.
I'll second that.
Miss Addington made the motion, and Miss Glover, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Part C, under, on our agenda is VACO voting credentials, and this year, Ms. Addington and Mr. Manus are going. Ms. Addington is going to serve as the voting representative, and Mr. Manus is the second. We need a motion on that?
We need to ratify that. That was sent in before the deadline, so it needs to be ratified.
Okay, do we have a motion to ratify this?
So moved.
Mr. Jeter made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Miss Glover, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Motion carries. Ratification carries. Hundred, next on the agenda, D, Information Technology Cyber Security Position.
This is a position that's being requested to help in our IT department. We are looking at a mid-level position to advertise for that. Our information technology department has a lot on their plate, keeping us safe in the county, plus an extreme amount of hardware that they have to keep and maintain. Cybersecurity is at a place and time where we want to do all we can to keep the county safe, to keep our servers safe, to keep people out of our data. That would be very harmful, you know, if we had a hack or something. We hear about those in the media all the time, so we want to be really careful. We have two people in the IT department now. We have a help desk, support person, and we have our IT manager. Both are extremely busy. I know that Mr. Bright has talked to you all about his needs, so I just wanted to put this on the agenda today to see if it was possibility that we could get this position funded with board action.
How are we, what is the cost for it?
We're going to advertise the position at $53,000, and with benefits, that would be about $75,000. So the position, if it was approved, would be for about seven months this year with a start date of December 1st. If we could get applications and everything together, get it advertised, get applications, and do the interview process by then, it might be a little later than December 1st. I have a line item in the budget that is for IT-related software that I don't think we'll use this budget year, so that could go for part of the salary, and I would need about $22,000, which we could add to the budget once it's amended later this year.
Any other questions, discussion, or do we have a motion?
As for the extra $22,000, I think that would come from probably the interest Kevin gets. I understand that that's more than what we originally anticipated.
It is. You could move it from a line item that we have excess revenue in at the time, or you could just take that from the general fund as well. I mean, it's, by the time that we're amending the budget, we'll have a better idea of where we're at for your end. So that's two options. You could do it from the general fund, or you could actually move from a line item into a salary line item.
I talked with Mr. Bright, and it's definitely a need for him. It's not just a luxury.
We don't usually come and ask for things unless they're, especially positions, we know the position the county's in. If it's not something that we feel is very needed, we don't come and ask.
Yeah, I know for myself, I didn't understand completely the magnitude of the stuff that he deals with, but it is the Commonwealth Attorney, sure, for county, of course, and yeah, most of this stuff's on print, too, so that means if there's an actual physical server that lives here that he has to demo, that's not an easy job.
Further discussion or a motion? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
We got a motion by Mr. Skeen, second, by Mr. Castile. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're down to a book key to beating out of this. Second?
Please appropriate $20.93 to county administrators, vehicle and power equipment fuels, 1,000-12110-406008 for an insurance claim received in deposit at the treasurer's office, and appropriate $4,576.23 to the clerk of circuit court, conferences and training, 1,000-21700-405540 for reimbursements received in deposit at the treasurer's office. Appropriate $966.18 to park golf course equipment lease, 1,000-71110-405435 for a refund received in deposit. And appropriate $1,053.75 to park golf course merchandise for resale, 1,000-71110-406099 for reimbursement received in deposit.
Do we have a motion to approve appropriations and transfers?
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Jeter made the motion, and Mr. Manus, second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? On to appointments. Ms. Tina?
You have three appointments to the Tourism Development Committee. You have applications from...
Transfer.
I thought we did, did do that? Okay.
Please transfer $1,800 from the incorrect expense code 1,000-35100-406003, Animal Control, Food and Catering, to the correct expense code 1,000-35100-406006, Animal Supplies Food.
Do we need a motion to approve transfers? Glover made the motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Addington, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry about that. Just have my mind somewhere else. Now, Ms. Tina.
You have three appointments to the Tourism Development Committee. Ishmael Richardson, Amy Mann, and Jennifer Pike have applied for those positions.
Could I make a statement on behalf of Ms. Pike? She is interested in the Art of Appalachia position, which I have also applied for. So she's requested that she be considered for that position instead of the tourism position.
Do we want to do that in reverse, then? Who's applying for the...
Jennifer Pike from Fort Blackmore.
Is there anyone else applying?
No, those three.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Jennifer Pike has applied as the first we'll consider.
Hold on a second. She talked to Mr. Skeen, and she is not wanting to do the Tourism Development, correct?
She's wanting to do Art of Appalachia.
Right. So you have two applications for three positions on Tourism Development Committee, Ish Richardson and Amy Mann.
Hold on, I need Amy Mann. I'll second it.
We have a motion that nominations.
I make a motion that nominations cease, and we vote by acclamation.
We have a second?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Amy Mann, Tourism Development, and Ish...
Ishmael Richardson.
Ishmael Richardson on Tourism Development Committee. Do we have a motion, a recommendation?
He currently serves on that board.
I'll nominate it.
Nominating?
And I'll make the motion that nominations cease, and we vote by acclamation.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good job. And the Art of Appalachia, Jennifer Pike, nomination by Mr. Skeen?
Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion that nominations cease, and we vote by acclamation.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
So that leaves us with still a vacancy on the Tourism Development.
Yes.
This is the new tourism field position. I'll stick it. She's settled.
It's her committee.
Okay.
Please think about the information technology.
I'll just make it.
The next position.
Never mind.
There is one other position that she will be on, I think.
She'll be on the Non-District Development Finance Board.
That's what you were thinking about.
With Freda. I'm the alternate. Go ahead, Tina.
In 2015, the board supervisors made a motion that the tourism director would serve on the Non-District Development Finance Board with the county administrator serving as the alternate. We now have a new tourism director, Brittany Robertson, and she needs to be appointed to that board with Freda Starnes as the alternate.
I'll make a motion to appoint Brittany Robertson to the Non-District Development Finance Board with Brittany, the county administrator, as the alternate.
I'll second the motion.
And we vote by acclamation.
He appointed, so...
Yeah, it's an appointment. Right.
It's an appointment like the others, so you nominate Brittany.
I'll nominate Brittany.
And then I'll make a motion that nominations cease, and we vote by acclamation.
Very good. We have a second?
I'll second it.
Miss Glover, second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good job.
So you still have an opening.
We've still got an opening for the Tourism Development.
We can readvertise that if that's what the board wishes to do.
Let's readvertise that. I'm going to try to think of somebody from down my way, too. I'd like to see District 6 representation. No offense. If you find good people, send them our way.
We have good people.
Okay, we're ready to move on to item number 12, Attorney's Reports Act, Craig.
I don't have anything today. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Ms. Keglin? If not, we'll move on to item 13, County Administrator's Report.
You have your claims in your folder in the green, on the green sheet. The general fund balance after claims is $7,471,000. The general fund balance after claims is $7,471,012.40. As you can see by the comparison chart, we're a little ahead of what we were this time last year. Claims for the month, early sets totaled $570,038.27. Total claims for the month that will need to be approved is $1,456,828.89. You've got a list of claims that are over $5,000. And the largest one is the regional jail quarterly payment, $562,796.30. So that's why your total's greater than normal. So just look through that list and see if you have any questions about anything that's on there.
Any questions by the board? Not, we need a motion to approve claims for the month?
Seems like we may come out in a hole this year on regional jail, right Rita? Got more inmates than we.
At this point, we do have more inmates than were budgeted for. So we were still early, one quarter in, so hopefully things will turn around before we get to the reconciliation at the end of the fiscal year. If not, it's, we'll have to true that up in next year's budget. Plus, we'll be budgeted for more, so it'll be, you know, it's like a double whammy. When the year you have to pay, you're having to budget for more too. So we'll keep an eye on that. But right now, we are trending on inmate count.
The five inmates at the labyrinth facility, that's one thing. Do you know if that's happened yet?
No, but I'll do an update and check on those at C Core.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll see what's happening there.
Any more questions, comments? Motion to pay the bills?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Ms. Anderson made the motion. We have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter's second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And under miscellaneous, is that the dates you want to talk about?
I do have one thing under miscellaneous. The state gives a half a day on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving for a holiday, and I'm requesting that the board give the other four hours as holiday pay and close the office for that, that day. That would be Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Two and a half days of that is state pay, or state holidays that we do follow. So I'm asking for an additional half day on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Motion by Ms. Manis, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Jeter's second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That's December 3rd, Tuesday morning. That's all right. Okay, that's different.
All right.
Down to the House of 14, County Department reports. Mr. Derrick France.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me. I apologize about last month. I was supposed to present last month the basketball we were dealing with. I don't want to talk a lot about storms, although y'all heard a lot about storms. I want to talk more about storms. But I appreciate letting me move my presentation to this month, so. I'll try to make it short and sweet. Hopefully, it's all good news today. Start off with the storms. You have Free to brought up Keith Memorial Park. Out there, we had a lot of trees falling. We had a lot of trees that necessarily weren't on the trail, but they were hazards. They were to come down. So that trail was probably closed for close to three weeks. But appreciate the deal, Free to, count our staff, everybody working on hard to get that cleaned up. So that trail's open now. It was a mess. I went and walked it. I know y'all familiar, the first left side, I was like, man, this ain't that bad. This will be okay. And then I got to the backside turnaround and it was, I mean, you about couldn't walk through it, so. But, and I'll reiterate this a bunch, you can clean up a mess. We were very fortunate, no damages, no significant damages. So, you know, you can clean up a mess, but we were very lucky not to have anything, what I would call significant, long-term damage. So we got that cleaned up. And then you'll see there on the slideshow, I've got pictures where we missed a couple of weeks because of the power outages and stuff. We would have ended in October, but this Saturday will be our last day of our Otis Roden State Farm Youth Vibe Ball League. Probably, I mean, I love everything I do, but the Vibe Ball's probably one of my favorites. And prior, everybody else is there. We have over 140 kids in it, which is a very good turnout. That's, we usually average between 120 and 150, so that 140, that's, that's good. That's what we, that's what we've been getting. Had a lot of great people involved with that. A lot of great coaches, a lot of great parents, a lot of great kids. That's probably one of our best. You'll see there, okay, so the last ones in October, we always let them dress up for howling. And that's always, I always tell them, I say, be smart about it. Don't wear something crazy, you'll hurt them. You can see some teams did the whole thing, which was really cool. The kids like that. I dress up too. I show myself there. I'm scary enough. Vibe Ball League's about to begin this Saturday. It's probably one of the favorite things I do. It's just, it's a really good league. We got a really good turnout. We got good people involved, so that gets up this Saturday. I'll hop down to the golf course side of things, again, talk about the storms. The course was unplayable, plus there were some safety issues. We closed for over two weeks up there to the public. Now, we were up there working the whole time, but as far as safety and being able to play, we did have to close for over two weeks there. And that was the 1st of October, which was the size of the storm. You remember that was good weather. So that definitely would have been some big revenue. But I have to report, we're still at a 15% increase even with that over last year's revenue. And that's kind of an asset because last year was, as you know, I've said many times, you know, we keep going up, up, up. And, you know, we were on a good track, and then we were closed for two weeks, and I kind of got worried, and I thought, man, we're still, still good. We had a great, great, great July. So that kind of gave us a buffer to, you know, kind of weather those two weeks we were closed. So that's good news. Again, we had extensive cleanup after the storms. We had a walking trail up there, and it was probably even worse than Keith Park. You couldn't, like I said, I mean, you couldn't really even walk it to assess it because it was so, so many trees down, so much brush down. But we've got that cleaned up, so it's back open to the public. Again, no damages to greens, which would have been significant, I think, a green. I think those greens are insured for $30,000, but I'm, I think that probably needs to be updated. Those, I don't even want to know what it would cost to rebuild a green with the drainage and everything. So no buildings damaged, nobody hurt, which is important. Nothing, nothing significant. You know, we had significant trees down, a significant mess, but no damages, no significant, you know, long-term issues. So we were very thankful up there. I was actually up there probably stupidly Friday when it was happening. And very quickly, I realized I saw, probably while I was there, six large pop, I mean, like, uprooted. Man, I played on DVD up here, so I got off there. It felt like a movie, but. We, we were very fortunate. I mean, I know that there's a lot worse things than a mess, and we just had to clean up a mess, so that's part of it. And lastly, I know I talked about it a lot of times, but Scott Service, they were up there. There may have been one or two days in that two-week period that they weren't up there. We did have to do some bigger stuff and get some bigger equipment to get some, I mean, we had some big stuff, but they required contract work. But we would not have been able to open as quick as we could without them doing some of the smaller things, so we could focus on the big projects. So definitely want to shout them out. They're just, you know, they help us do so many things up there. Whether it's basic maintenance or if it's something like this, they really, I mean, day one, they were there, so. Definitely want to thank them, so. Really, that's about all I have. Vibe Ball's going good, and we're still increasing play, still increasing memberships, still increasing revenue, so. But we've stayed busy, so things are going well, so. That's about all I have for the day, unless y'all have any questions or comments.
I do have a couple, but.
Yep.
We briefly touched on the extended hours.
Yes.
And you looked at that?
So that, and we talked, and I said I would get back with you. I did have an employee that was in the hospital for about two weeks. He's fine. But that happened, and then this happened. I really haven't, and just with how busy we've been and the staff we have, I've not really been able to approach that. I apologize. We were just at a point in time where I couldn't even attempt to try to make that, you know, to see what that would look like. So I don't know if it's worth revisiting in the spring, like when we get busy again. Obviously, right now, extended hours are going, you know, we were closing early because of the time change. But it's something I definitely want to revisit. I just wasn't able to during that time. And I know you mentioned also, Mr. Skeen's the pickleball. I haven't done a lot with that, but I did talk to some companies that do the striping and the painting. And every one of them basically said, for the two courts we have, it's probably better for us to look at doing something in-house. And I've looked at some different, I think it's something we can do easily. We could just do it ourselves. So that's probably the pathway I want to take on that, because they said, you know, for those two courts, just to come out and do that, it's probably more cost than what we would think. And they even said, you know, there's kits you can get, and I've been researching some of those, but I think I'm just going to do it myself for, for our purposes, since we don't have standalone pickleball courts, you know, or it's still going to be a tennis net. It's still going to be a tennis court, so he said, man, if I was you, I would just, I would just do it yourself. He said, there's some kits that I think will serve the purpose, you know, which people already do come up there. They, they put down some tape. I put down tape one time. Tape doesn't work. I will have to get some type of kit that's actually designed for that surface. Cause just nothing that you just get out of stores going to adhere to that. I mean, within a day or two, they, they rip up, so. But I think it's just something I'm going to do myself, so. But I did look into that, and he said, man, it's just not worth the expense for us to come all the way out there just to do those two. And I get it. I get wasted, so. I think that place is out of, maybe Memphis. I mean, there's not a whole lot of local court striping companies, you know, so. But both of those things, I don't mind a revisit. But like I said, the striping thing, I think we did it ourselves. The extended hours, may, may need to revisit that in the, in the spring when we get, you know, usually about April, May is when we start getting really busy again, so.
And the time change.
Time change, yeah. It's crazy how that, I underestimate it, then you go outside, and you're like, man, that hour makes a big difference. It really does.
Makes a huge difference.
So some of the high school kids, which we had, we've had a huge influx of membership, players from the, the young kids, which is great. You know, if they're not happy they're for closer, they're not like, guys, y'all get it there by four. You can play that hole in an hour and a half, you know, but. They, they, they really support us. I mean, I love to see the young kids doing that. We've got a huge, huge group of young kids playing, so that's good. I mean, school gets out, here come, here come the kids, you know, every day, so.
Great job, Derrick. It's good to see that 15% increase. The, the one thing I've got calls on for the past couple of years is that road up Reed Hala, and it's been paved.
It's got paved, yeah.
It's great.
Wish I could take credit for that. I just drove one day and it was there. Oh, no, it's, it needed, yeah. It's much, much, much better.
I just wish that y'all went over to Highway 70. Maybe eventually.
I know. Um, I know, oh, well, I get on the wrong side of this. I know a lot of people criticize. I, I know the city did a great job. There was, there was a lot of debris there on that road. And, you know, obviously, they had some stuff they had to get to, but really quickly, they, they, they did a good job.
Yeah.
You know, we had to come through City 2 for a couple of days, but the city, they got, they did a good job on getting that road cleaned up for everybody, so. I do appreciate that. I think a lot of it was the city workers too. They, they did a lot there on that road. The golf course road, which is before you go up Ford Drive, that side, you couldn't, I mean, there was numerous, numerous things down, so. I appreciate them. I mean, it took everybody, but like I said, I mean, there were some bad things that happened, some major damages. We, we just suffered a mess, and we can clean that up, so we're, we're very fortunate, so.
Good job. Appreciate you.
Thank you. I appreciate everybody.
I did have one more question.
Yes, sir.
You said 17% increase in revenue.
Yes.
How does that translate into a number of members that you all have gained or a number of games played? What metric are we looking at?
So I did, I, I can get that. You know, I think last time, I think I had the numbers for memberships, but I just know since then, I, you know, when I do my, when I do my turn-ins to the treasurer's office, it's broken down into different sections. And I know we, we've sold season passes since even the last time I talked to you all. And most of that is the junior memberships. Probably, if we gained 15 members since I talked to you, I'd say 12 or 13 of our junior memberships. Rounds played, yes, definitely up. And like I, I think I've told you all before, one of the biggest things you see is people coming from other, they were maybe regulars at another course, even in tennis, you know, other different areas that they've come, I mean, from Wise County, from Lee County, they, they've come to us, you know. Pricing's a big part of that, you know. We, we talked about raising our pricing a little bit. That's been, that was the right move. Cause some other places raised them too much. And I think they almost, well, we've heard that from people. They said, I used to play here, but they went up $10, $12 a round. Y'all went up $2 a round. And, you know, we, we've retained those people. I don't know how many people have come from a different course, played at U.C. for a couple of days, a week, and the next thing you know, like, hey, man, I joined. I joined up. This is the place to be, so, and we love to get that, so. Yeah, that revenue number, I mean, obviously, the, the price increase on the cards helped. But I'd say that the majority of that is just an increase in play, an increase in membership. More so than just that dollar made the 15%. No, it, it was the increase in memberships and stuff, so.
Yeah, next stop. I'd love to see.
Yeah, I can get, yeah.
And memberships.
Rounds played, I can get a good idea. The reason, cause there, there's a greens fee line item. There's also a cart fee line item. Well, if you're a member, you don't pay the greens fee. You know, so that it's, I can, I can get you a good probably idea. I can't get it down to the round play cause then a membership, you know, and then you say carts, there's a lot of young kids that don't get a cart. They're members, but they just, they, they walk. Not a whole lot of, a few do, so. I can't get an exact, but I can get you probably very much a good estimation of, hey, we probably got this increase of rounds played.
I'd love to see.
Yeah. And definitely the membership, that's easy. I can get that one easy, but rounds played, I can get a good estimation, so.
Appreciate it. This looks good.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate everything y'all have to say.
Next on the agenda is our new Tourism Director, Brittany Robertson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, I know most of you all in here, but for you who do not know me, my name is Brittany Robertson, and I am feeling some rather large shoes with the departure of Pam Cox as the Tourism Director. I'm doing this in a part-time capacity. A little bit about my background. I am currently a faculty member at EVA Wise. I teach in the Department of Communication Studies and have a marketing PR background. So I was so excited to jump on this opportunity. I've worked with Pam in the past with a few of the videos that she's done. And I am just hoping to stand on the work, climb on top of the shoulders, on top of Pam's shoulders with the work that she's already done. This is going to be rather brief, as I'm still kind of working to integrate myself into the role. But I wanted to talk to you all a little bit about a few of the things that Pam had worked on in the last few months and some of the things that I'm going to be continuing with. And I apologize, I didn't know that I could hand out goodies, so I only have one to pass around, but I've got more of these. I don't know if you've been able to see this. This is the Bounty Trail brochure that Pam was able to secure with the Bounty Trail Grant. So I'm going to show you a few items from that. So the Bounty Trail Grant that she was able to secure, she's worked with Cumberland, or not Cumberland, corporate marketing out of Bristol and handles, they're, they've been handling some of the video and website production with us. And so we have two websites now, which is Scott County General Website, the Tourism Website, and also now the Bounty Trail Website. Some items to note, the users in terms of visitation in the last month have been up 66% in terms of visitation. Organic acquisition is up 5%, which means that's people going there organically on their own. Some items to note, I thought was pretty interesting in terms of the locations where users from the website or visitors to the website are coming from. Nashville, Bristol, Johnson City, all of those are up. Kingsport's up. So we've got a lot of local places, but it's nice to see some of the places outside of the immediate area popping up. In terms of the actual Scott County Tourism Website, a couple of things to note there. We've not had our clicks and impression, our impressions are up a little bit. Our clicks are down, but that's something we can work on. Something of note here with our user locations on this website is that we're getting places like Atlanta, New Jersey. We've had a couple of places in California pop up on that website, which is pretty interesting to know that people are looking at us from that. Our organic landing pages, which means people are visiting this on their own, are coming, looking up Devil's Bathtub, obviously. Natural Tunnel, which is up 22%, which is really exciting, and I think with some more promotion, Natural Tunnel, which is an amazing natural resource, we can really kind of grow those numbers. Little Sunny Falls is down a little bit, and then Hunting is up by 73%, which makes complete sense. So being able to play off of things like that, I think is very interesting. I don't know if you've seen the video, but Pam had these lengthy videos produced. This is a 30-second commercial that she did. 30-second commercial that she did. I hope I did, who invented earlier? It's not going to work.
Thank you.
Oh, goodness, okay. Well, it may not work.
There you go.
You got it?
Got it.
Well, I invented it. I'm not the most tech savvy, so. At any rate, I can send those out at some point, but she had two, we shared those on our social pages. She had two, or she had one lengthy 17-minute video produced, and then she was able with corporate marketing, break those up into 30-second commercials. One of those, or both of those, which will be playing at the Lammsburg Visitor Center this spring, so that's something moving forward with those videos that she's wanting to do, and that'll kind of slowly wrap up the Agri-Tourism Bounty Trail Grant with that. So, that'll be something that's looking, that we're looking forward to in the spring. So, the other thing, I don't know if you had a chance to visit the website, the Bounty Trail website, it's got all of our partners on there, apiaries, nurseries, farms that we've got on there. There's also a really great interactive map, which I would love to be able to expand on, some other opportunities with those interactive maps, because I think they do a really good job of user engagement. But it's an interactive map, which shows all of the places in our county that are participating with the Bounty Trail. And she also did something with the Sunflower Selfie Trail this year, which was the same sort of principal lists of all of the places that participated in growing the sunflowers, and where you can find those. And again, if you go on the map, these are actually, or on the website, these are actually interactive grants, or interactive maps, which is really neat. These are just some of the key indicators with corporate marketing that they provide. This just goes to show a little bit about what the website looks like in terms of growth, and what the traffic looks like. Again, you can look at the user piece, which shows that it's up 65%. The Bounty Trail website, a lot of that's had to do with targeted marketing. That corporate marketing did, as well as boosted ads on social media, which helps a lot, too. And then that's the Scott County website itself. So, that one has a little bit of down trend in terms of users, but not by very much. So, we're looking forward to being able to kind of promote that one a little bit more. They've had a lot of heavy emphasis on the Bounty Trail, which has been great, so we want to be able to continue doing it with the Scott County website as well. So, moving forward, a little bit of what I'm excited to do, like I said, phase two of the Agri-Tourism piece includes video placement and brochures in Lammsburg, Virginia Visitor Center, which highlights Scott County and the Agri-Tourism work that we've done. Also, continuing with Facebook and YouTube marketing ads, so these are 30-second targeted ads that will direct you to the Bounty Trail website. Corporate image is handling those types of things. Personally, some things that I'm looking forward to doing, I have three things on my agenda, things that I'm looking towards working with. Again, Pam has established a phenomenal foundation of tourism in the county in terms of our print materials and marketing materials. I have more of a social media background, so I'm looking to obviously increase our social media presence. That's free marketing, as much as, well, within reason, it's free marketing. So, as much as we can get ourselves out there on social media, I think the better we are. We have so many natural resources that we can highlight, so I'm looking to create more short-form videos. If you're on social media or YouTube much, you'll see YouTube reels, Instagram reels, Facebook reels, YouTube shorts. These types of things are trending, and they're also things that really draw in users, and draw in staves and shares and metrics that are important in terms of visibility. So, I'm really going to work to push the short-form videos and things like that. Also, interested in doing small business spotlights and Scott County stories, so people and businesses in the county that may have been around for a long time or have interesting stories. I've been reaching out to a few of the local businesses, trying to set up some things so we can get in and do some video content for them, and just kind of go through and start sharing all of the places that we already have, and modernize it a little bit in terms of the video content. And then the last thing that I'm interested in doing, and I've started working with a few individuals on this, is creating a small business slash entrepreneur network with all of our small businesses and entrepreneurs throughout the county, because we have a lot of these. And the goal here is that we provide a support network, so that we are, we get all of these folks kind of in the same room together, and we've got like-minded individuals who are dealing with a lot of the same things, running their own business, so that we can help provide resources, so that we can also direct them to help market themselves, because any marketing that they can do for themselves ultimately helps us from a tourism perspective as well. So, being able to kind of connect the dots with all of these folks, and have these people able to work together, and be able to look for resources together. We have so many, you know, I was talking to a few folks from the office, we have so many talented business owners and entrepreneurs that are kind of spread out, and it would be nice to be able to piece these folks together and give them resources and support to kind of help one another. So, I don't know what that's going to look like. I'm, again, in the very early stages of creating all of these things, as I just kind of stepped into this role a few weeks ago, but I've started putting those things in place, working to connect those people. So, I know that was fairly brief, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those now.
Brittany, I think we're fortunate to have you in this position. It's good to see.
Thank you, it's good to be here, I'm excited.
Any questions of Miss Robertson?
I will make a comment. I've worked with Ms. Robertson on the project, and I would say you made an excellent choice. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you, I look forward to it as well.
Yeah, I'm a small business entrepreneur in my work. I would really push you to work with the ADA and Scott County Chamber of Commerce.
Actually, I have a meeting with the ADA at 12:30, so.
I'd love to see, there's so much synergy that you all could have there.
Oh, yeah.
I think, I think it'd be a great.
Well, and one of the things that we have at UVA Wise, we have, it's called the Nest, which is a, it's a small business incubator, kind of like a network. And I'm going to look at that model as something to kind of utilize. Actually, Jeff Arrington and I started this discussion a few months ago, and we both agreed there are just so, I mean, me doing the tourism videos with Pam had me kind of hopping all over the county, seeing all of these things we've got going on, that me, a county resident of 38 years, had no idea. So, it's like, okay, we've got all this stuff going on, how can we link these people together to be able to utilize resources together, to be able to provide them, whether it's, you know, troubleshooting on certain aspects, or whether it's bringing in, you know, small business entrepreneurs who have, you know, handled things, or who have built successful businesses in small areas, bringing those people in to kind of help them network. I think that's so important and really needed. So, I'm excited, very excited about that piece. And like I said, I've worked, I've talked to a few folks from the Frontier, Gacy Frontier about this, and looking at reaching out to people in the Duffield area, and Dugan, and in all those areas, to be able to kind of create that network. I think it's going to be a good thing.
Other comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
We'll add, this time we'll add to our agenda, our Commonwealth Attorney Scott. You'll go ahead, Mr. Gill.
I'll be really brief. I know you guys have had a painful morning. I flipped on, I try to watch your meetings when I can. I flipped on, I noticed that my office was mentioned, and my budget was mentioned, and there were some questions raised about that, and that's fine. I'm really just asking kind of, I'm asking to be invited back. I'd like to make a presentation, just on what it is my office does, the changes from the budget, I think it was, I think it was sent through 85 to what it is now. I'd like to go through that, the different sourcing that that comes from, you know, it doesn't all come from the county. Whatever we get from the county, we're grateful for. I realize that I have made probably several, since being elected, several presentations on Scott service, but I haven't really done a presentation detail on what it is we do. There's been several changes just in the law of what prosecutors are responsible for. There's pretty sweeping criminal justice reform, and there's, which adds more workload. And so, anyways, I'd like to just come and walk through all that. I don't know if that would be helpful or not. At your next meeting, I know, like I said, you've had a painful morning, I don't want to bore you, but I'd like to get some charts and things together, just to show you caseload and all that. You guys will be all right with that.
I think that'd be great.
That'd be great, absolutely.
We can all be educated a little bit.
That way we can maybe explain where some of the money's going.
Right. And I, and I understand that. I mean, like I said, you look at it on paper, right, I totally understand that. I'd like to add some context, and you may not like the answer, that's fine, but I'd still like to, like I said, educate if possible. I apologize, I don't have a blazer. I just saw that I was mentioned, that I came straight from the office, so I didn't, didn't run home, so I apologize.
That's fine.
But anyways, I just would like to come back next meeting, and I'll have you, hopefully, an entertaining presentation. I know it's not.
I hope the people that are, well, maybe you can see, because you have contact with her, maybe make sure Ms. Powers knows, because that's who was asking.
Actually, I talked to Ms. Powers for probably three minutes, and I don't know who she really is.
I was trying to remember where it was mentioned. Thank you.
I just, and it's, I'm not, don't take this as me jumping up and down, I just would like to address and explain to the best of my ability, and.
Sure, I think that'd be very helpful.
If that's helpful, and if not, you know, that's fine, too.
Is that Ms. Powers, the one that was up earlier speaking?
I, I think it was, but that's just kind of what I called, and it's.
I have, I have talked to her a couple of times.
And again, no problem, her right to say whatever, but I'd just like, if possible, address that, and explain, and bring you all the data, and then let you guys be the judge.
Thank you for watching, and coming down.
No problem, and I appreciate you guys inviting me to come back, and kind of invited myself, anyways. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, we're down to Board of Supervisors comments, requests, and recommendations.
I do have my standard update on VDOT. If you'd like me to proceed at this time.
That's fine.
Roadside debris, I talked to Mr. Sumter this week, just to get an update on his end. He's the VDOT Wise Director. The roadside debris cleanup, he said, was 85% complete. The calls I've gotten this month regarding the storm, I've had some with string cleanup, and mostly around low-water bridges. He said the environmental review is being conducted, and they're now scheduling the work, and it should be completed by the end of November. That's for the low-water bridges. The last round of primary mowing is complete, and they're working on mowing the high-volume secondary roads. Virginia Farm Bureau attended a dinner, Daryl was there, but Mr. Baker mentioned this. They have some resolutions they're submitting to the Virginia Legislature this year involving VDOT. Encouraging VDOT, or the agency responsible to conduct routine and regular cleaning of rope ditches, culverts, and maintenance of rideaways. Support local control maintenance of secondary roads. Encourage the Tobacco Revitalization Commission to support, educate, encourage large animal vets to practice in Virginia. And I did speak with Dr. Eversol, the Animal Science Director of Virginia Tech, and Mr. Gerald, I know you have heard this. They're experiencing a reduction in the number of large animal vet students, and it's a national shortage. LMU is the largest vet still in the United States with 1,200 students, and they're currently looking at expanding the campus in Lee County to expand their housing. On the PSA, Robinette Valley Waterline Extension is being planned. They're handing out user agreements in the area. If someone needs one, they can go by the PSA office in Weber City and pick up a user agreement. Railroad Crossing in Daniel Boone, that's for the sewer. It's scheduled for, the railroad for November 12. They're still trying to schedule with a contractor on that. Nature's Conservancy, Nick Proctor out of Abington. We've had an opportunity to visit the Fort Blackmore Clint River Launch Site for boats, and they're, I think, going to start that project next week with those improvements, and they're looking to improve it even more next year. The Scott County Horse Association's having their first turkey shoot in Dugan at the Horse Park, November 9th, that's this weekend, Saturday, 3:00 p.m., and they're planning additional shoots, but they had a real successful year last year. Something that Steve Pike wanted me to mention with Spearhead Trails, the Dickinson County Shooting Range in Clintwood are offering free shooting for veterans on Veterans Day, November 11th. It's a multi-level shooting tournament at no cost to veterans and free food. Scott County Cattle Association, Mr. Gerald's name gets mentioned often, and he played a big role in this bounty trail in Scott County. The third 20th year bread heifer sale is November 30th at Washington County Fairgrounds in Abington, and he handed out the flyer on that. There's 120 head, mostly artificial bred, top-end bred heifers. Now, these will be two-year-old heifers. This 20th year, it keeps growing, thanks to Scott and the Scott County Cattle Association. And I have cattle myself, and several of you do. This starts when that calf is born, and they develop that heifer calf for two years until they get to this sale this weekend. So, they put a lot of time into it, a lot of money. The APCA Program Incentives for First-Time Home Buyers. A Virginia Housing Program is offering a 1% mortgage rate reduction. I'm going to just touch briefly on it, if you need, I'll give you some contacts here at the bottom. But you can get a 1% mortgage rate reduction, you must qualify for Virginia Housing Program product. Downhaven Assistance, there's income qualifier, credit score must be at least 620, and you can get up to a 10% sales price reduction incentive, up to $40,000 max. So, this is on your down payment, 10% sales price reduction. Savings down payment toward purchase the first time, you can earn $10 for every dollar invested, up to a max of $10,000. So, if you invest $1,000, you can get $10,000 back in return for first-time home buyers. Have to be 18-years-old, US citizen living in Virginia, and there is a household income requirement. Their financial advisors available, and actually, there's a loan bank that services this region, and they will offer counseling for people wanting to finance. That APCA office, and that's where Freedom originated from, I guess, from Scott County. It's at 175 Military Lane, that is in Daniel Boone, up past Scott's office. That telephone number is 276-452-1224. 276-452-1224. But for first-time home buyers, it's a lot of things going on for that, so. Amy is in contact there, Amy Bone. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I had a quick question about your VDOT comments. Pete Savatino and Trish Gibson were both getting here about Springs Road. Did you get in contact with them the last time they were here? I think it was three or four months ago.
I did.
They're back?
I've asked her to give me a call to get what they've done. Mr. Sumter, I think that said that day that he was going to get with them, so I assumed that everything had been taken care of, but she told me that, so I will be assisting her with that.
No, I talked to Ed Colby, VDOT, approximately three months ago or so, and maybe four months now, and because the tile is, like she said, dangerous, rusted out, kind of short, brush, sitting like a scuba, beating through the brush, and everything, and like I told her, I called, and you've heard him say the work order numbers, and seems like some jobs they jump on pretty quick, and some jobs they don't. And if they don't get it in in the next little bit, it's going to be rainy season, because it's, the creek comes to there.
Seems like colts are one of the ones that they don't get to too quick.
Correct.
I've seen them on the list for a long time, and finally they stopped. You down the pair of them, that one. Just making sure that somebody's following up.
VDOT is getting some roads paved and repaved. The fire we had down the state line the other day, I was coming down to the bottom of Kyle Hill, the road was blocked, so I went up East Carter's and down Newland Hala. All of Newland Hala has been paved now. That was a gentleman at PSA asking for water down through there. Also, Reed Hala, I mentioned a while ago to Derek when he was in here, they paved Reed Hala, and Foot Mineral has been paved over Duffield, from Foot Mineral all the way through Maeve, I think, to the road coming from Fort Blackmore. That was from last year. Was that last year. That, that road's in good shape. And then, of course, down at Daniel Boone, they've gone all the way down through there, where they did redid the water and sewer, so they are getting some stuff done. Any other comments?
Any other comments?
I'd like to make a comment, please. Speaking of the fire at State Line, I know that our first responders, our fire departments, sheriff's office, EMS, they've been very busy for the past two months, and I want to give them all a big, big thank you, and God bless each one of you all for all the things that you do for our county. They probably don't hear it enough, but they do need to know that we do thank them and we do appreciate the job that they all do. I also want to say that on November the twenty-sixth at six P.M. at the Boozy Creek Community Center for District Two, I'm going to have another town hall meeting for the folks of District Two to come out and talk to me. I help a lot of people do work orders and things like that with VDOT during these sessions, that, you know, I get out and talk to them. But I just want them to come out and talk to me and just voice their concerns and what are they, they're concerned about and everything. And then I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, I pray everyone has a wonderful day, and God bless each one of you.
Thank you.
Good job. Anyone else?
Wayside, you know, we're still overrun with Tennessee trash, I just trucked come in there yesterday at two-twelve with a whole trailer loaded, Tennessee tags, I don't know what we can do about it.
We've got it at East Carls Valley House.
It's covered up every day that you.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know what we can do other than it'd have to be somebody that are all kind of expensive.
Yeah. Someone mentioned in our meeting this earlier, and afterwards, I walked out and talked to some people, and they were complaining about Tennessee tags that live over here and driving back and forth. We've talked to the sheriff about that, and he says there has to be a lot of observation of that. I don't know what we can do about that either, some of these things, Highway Department, you know, things like that and.
Gentlemen, we're open to suggestions.
If, I've suggested before, if a man would put a camera on each and every one of them and a loudspeaker to, somebody could be sitting like somewhere in the office, sheriff's department dispatcher or something, maybe even body, somebody over at the shop at Land Fields. Washington and having four employees, they have to watch you twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Then we could open them up, and when you'd have them on camera, you sure, when you take it in front of the judge, you can ask the picture or any kind of question, but you'll get the same picture. That's the way I can see that's going to stop it, if it's ever going to stop.
It just takes one picture, one good throw in the book at them, I don't think. If we could get somebody to cooperate on the prosecution side.
Is there any more discussion or comments? If not, we need to go into closed session, we need a motion to go into closed session.
I don't like to second it.
Daryl made the motion, and Danny second, all in favor, should say aye.
Aye.
On a motion by Daryl Jeter duly second, by Danny Castile, this board hereby enters into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one to discuss A-one Personnel, County Evaluations of County Attorney and County Administrator. Go into closed session.